Recall the meeting to order of the Fire Merit Commission for May 2nd. Or, I'm sorry, May 18th. And would, would like to have roll call, please.
Dyson?
Present.
McCormick?
I'm here. McCormick, present.
Smith?
Present.
Brown? And Spalding? Don't like they're both absent.
Next on our housekeeping would be the approval of minutes from our last meeting.
I have not sent those to you.
Alright, so we will table that for our, our, our next meeting to vote on approval of those. Approval of the agenda. You have any questions?
Do we have an agenda for this evening?
I, I did send out one. I would make one note that it did say May 2nd on there. You might want to amend that to May 18th.
Okay, that's where I was a little confused, Zach. I was looking at this agenda I had in my hand and this is for the 18th, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Ha- has anybody received the, the agenda?
And how do we- I have the one dated May 2nd, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. If we correct that to May 18th, uh, do we have a motion to approve this agenda?
I would make two separate mo- make a motion to amend. Second, and then it has to pass by unanimous vote because there's only three here.
Okay. So you, you need a motion to, um, correct the agenda to the 18th?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we correct the date on the agenda to the 18th.
Dyson, second to- All in favor?
Dyson?
I'm in favor.
McCormick?
Yes.
Approve- yes.
Thank you.
Uh, I do not believe there were any claims that were submitted.
Now you need to-
Oh, I'm sorry.
And I will make a motion that we approve the agenda. Uh, we just changed the date on.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Okay.
Or roll call vote, yep.
Dyson?
I'm in favor of approval.
McCormick?
Aye.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
I don't believe there were any claims to be approved, is that correct, Zach?
That's correct.
Um, going down to, um, number six on the amended agenda to the 18th. Uh, there was old business discussion of the amendment changing the rules for application to be completed online.
So this was the notification, uh, regarding the changes to the application process. So it's moving to the online applications. And trying to find the- So it was noticed, um, more than 10 days ago. And just to be clear, all the notices had the correct date on there to the agenda. The- So the current rule is contained at, uh, Rules and Procedures, number one, section, Roman numeral one, subsection A. And, uh, the proposed rule. Does everybody have a copy of it?
Yes.
Yes, I have.
Okay, so, and that, it should show you exactly what the current rule reads and what the proposed rule is, so, um, those would be the changes.
Um, yeah, if I, hey guys, just, just to make this easier, everybody's on the same page. If you're not, you would mute your computer. It's really easy if you just go to your box and hit mute. Uh, because although I'm hearing a lot of everybody's, uh, talking, so but let's just, if everybody's on the same page, let's all just mute our, uh, devices and, and only unmute it when we're speaking, please.
Is there any, uh, questions or discussion of the, uh, proposed rule? Uh, through the City Human Resources Office, uh, that will be submitted electronically. I think one of our focuses was, we wanted to give proper notice. So potentially someone could not come back and say, hey, I was prejudiced in some way by, by not knowing this change, so. Is that, is that where everybody sees it?
And Joe, tell me if I'm wrong, but the, the Human Resources has already moved to an electronic application. We're just amending the rules to reflect that we are now requiring electronic applications.
That's correct.
We're not going to accept written.
And there is also access in the Human Resources Department to fill out the application for those who don't have internet access.
Yeah. Sam, I think you're muted.
Well, yeah, let me see. Okay, is that better, Zach?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Starting discussion? The commission? If not, do I hear a motion, uh, for approval of our proposed rule?
I'd be glad to make a motion that we, uh, accept and approve the change to requiring to online applications.
Dyson seconds it. Okay, roll, roll call vote?
Right, Dyson?
Yes.
McCormick?
Aye.
Yes. Mr. Spalding is also on the call now. I can see him here. Uh, it says he's connecting right here, so I know, not sure that he's available to answer, but he is on the call.
Thank you.
Thanks. The cavalry's arrived.
Mr. Spalding?
Spalding? Yes.
Were you available for, on that vote? Or not yet?
I'm trying to get my picture to come up.
Do you want to pass that on 3O?
Okay, uh. I've, I'm, I'm in. I don't know how fit, you know, how effective it is.
We hear you.
We can hear you.
We're glad to hear you.
I can see you guys, but-
TA, TA, we just took, we just took a vote on the, uh, changing to applications being required to be online. Did you have any questions or would you like to, uh, vote on that?
What, to extend the date of the online applications?
No, require, changing from, uh, written applications to requiring that all applications be online.
Okay.
Are you in favor?
Yes.
And I'm going to step out of the way and let Mr. Spalding, uh, take over at, uh, number seven on our agenda. Thank you.
Well, I don't have a copy, a printed copy of the agenda, so if you can, you can go ahead and finish conducting it, conducting the meeting.
Alright, I, I'll be happy to, um. Uh, the next item was old business, the discussion, uh, of the amendment altering the interview process and testing cutoff for eligible applicants.
So this was separately noticed. And there are multiple rule, rules that are affected by the proposed rule. So, um, the rules that could be affected are Rules and Procedure number two, uh, Roman numeral three, Roman numeral four, or Roman numeral six, and Roman numeral seven. The current rules are listed on the notification out to the public and the department, and the proposed rules are included.
You need to mute. There we go. Okay, carry on, I'm sorry.
No worries. Um, so did everybody get a copy of the proposed changes?
I-
Yeah. Okay, um.
Zach, I, I have a copy of those, but I also saw the email with the recommendations, uh, from the, uh, folks up in Indianapolis.
Yes, so, um, I believe that Ms. Emerson is on the call.
I am here on the call.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, um, she sent that email out and she is the best person to explain, uh, what's going on there if you all want to open it up for her to discuss that.
I think that'd be great to, uh, Amy, if you wouldn't mind enlightening us a little bit more, uh, on some of these items you addressed in your email.
Sure. You know, you currently have the cutoff set at one standard error measurement below the mean. And it sounds like you're looking at ways to change the promote the applicant process and make it better. Uh, so my first question for you is, what is your goal in changing the cutoff score? Are you hoping to increase the number of applicants who pass the test to go on to the interview? Is that, is that the reason that you are changing the percentage?
Yes.
Um, so as it's, I guess I should explain a little bit about what our written test scoring is like. Now, it's designed as an aptitude test. It is not the same as the state tests that are required for certification. Those tests are more geared around learning and mastering information and memorizing the details in order to gain that certification. The aptitude test is designed very differently. In our case, we, uh, give the applicants a study session the day of the test. And it includes all of the information that they need to learn right there on the spot to do well on the exam. Now, as a result, the average score on our written exam is probably in the mid eighties. It might range from perhaps eighty-four percent to eighty-seven percent, depending on which version of the test is being given. So considering that the average score is in the mid eighties, if you set the cutoff at seventy percent, you'll end up having probably about ninety-five percent of the applicants passing the exam and moving on to the interviews. And if your goal is to, uh, be more inclusive and allow more applicants to pass the exam, then that would be fine. I just want to make sure that you understand that setting it at seventy percent, you're likely to have barely any applicants who would be excluded from the process on the basis of the exam.
If, if I might, uh, Mr. McCormick, I think your questions are always, always good questions and, and, uh, Amy, thank you for being here with us, um, in this weird way. Uh, I know you're-
Right.
You're willing to drive down anytime, but this is, this is convenient for everyone. I want to tell you the union stance. You know, I'm speaking for over a hundred of my members and, and I've worked very closely with Chief Grant. Actually, he's kind of spearheaded a lot of this as well. So, um, I, I'll kind of speak on behalf of both of us and Chief Grant's on the call. He can speak up if he's got any issues with what I say. But just so that we're all clear, I read your email, uh, twice, just to make sure I understood everything that you sent. It was very informative. And, uh, I think that the spirit of what we're trying to do is to be more inclusive. It is to include more people into the interview process. I understand what you're saying about the seventy percent and how it doesn't necessarily, uh, in line with the way that that test was developed. But it is a number that we're all familiar with. And even, and, and if we used it, as you just mentioned, really not going to be discounting anyone, uh, if we used a seventy percent number.
Right.
Most of the people are in the low, low to mid to upper eighties, right? So, um, if we, uh, somebody's sharing this, okay, yeah. So, but, but we, we also put a cap of one hundred interviews on our, uh,
Right.
On what we were talking about. So sure, we, so what I see there is we might dip down into the eighty-two, eighty-one percent range. And then we'll, we'll, we'll hit our hundred. But at this, what we've done is we just interviewed a hundred people now instead of thirty like we would have once done.
Right.
That allows us to be more inclusive and, 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 uh, hopefully more diverse in, in the people that we're interviewing. So that's kind of, that's our spirit, the spirit behind what we're trying to do. And I think it, it actually, everything you said, I read it. I'm like, that sounds great. I think though, I do want to point out, we were specific in that we were going to try to build five panels.
Right. That's, I'm not concerned about the seventy percent cutoff. I think that if your spirit is in fact to be more inclusive and you realize that almost all of the applicants are likely to move on to the interview phase, if you're good with that, I'm totally fine with that.
So, so-
My concern was the five boards.
So the last hiring process, I think we had over three hundred applicants. And so if we capped it at a hundred, yeah, sure, we're, we're interviewing about thirty-three percent of, of the applicants. And we probably would have, I think we looked at it. Brian Emerson is on the call here. I think he could clarify. I'm pretty sure we got down into the, the mid eighties, kind of what you were saying as far as, because that's kind of where everybody hangs in the, in the averages. Um, but I think if we changed what we've written about, we will have five panels. And just say, we will develop panels of five people and they'll be built this way. And each panel, uh, I need to reference really quickly. You, you had mentioned to keep it fair and, and in a way to keep it, uh, uh, fair to everyone and, and the panels to be the same. Uh, you said that really they should have about twenty or more, uh, applicants that each panel is interviewing.
Right.
So I think we could build this in a way that it says, we will build panels, the panels will look like this.
Yes.
Panel will interview at least twenty people, twenty applicants, and then we could determine from that point how many panels need to be built. Is that, does that sound right to you, Amy?
Yes, that sounds much better. And I think if you leave it more open-ended like that, you can wait and see how many applicants you actually have moving forward before you tie yourself into a corner that you don't want to be stuck in. So I think it is wise to keep it more open-ended. Um, I do think having panels that include diversity is excellent. Um, but I have some other ideas that you may also prefer rather getting locked into having to norm the boards. Like, for example, um, for efficiency, I can see that, you know, if you have a hundred people and one board is interviewing all hundred people, it would probably take all of a full week to do that. And that's a lot of time that not everyone has. So I imagine one of the reasons you wanted to divide it into separate boards is to shorten the amount of time that you're obligating each of the panels. Plus, it's very exhausting, I might add. Now, one thing that I might recommend though is to maybe divide, rather than send the applicants, okay, applicant first comes in, we'll see board A. The next applicant will see board B. The next applicant will see board C. It might be better and more fair to actually divide the interview in half. And this is actually how it was done last time. But the reason why I recommend that is because as much as possible, you don't want to manipulate the scores in any way. But if you have different applicants being seen by different boards, you ultimately are going to have to norm the scores in all likelihood if there are any significant differences within the average and standard deviations of those boards. And there is likely to be. And it may not be a huge difference that you're observing between the boards, but as long as it's significant, it will have an impact. And I gave you an example. Uh, one example was, what if you have one board whose average score is seventy-five percent? What if you have another board whose average score is seventy-two percent? Well, they sound like they're pretty close, but then when you dig deeper, one of the board's standard deviations is eight, the other is twelve. And the standard deviation describes how much spread there is in the range of scores. And by the time you have that adding into the equation, your boards are conducting interviews in a way that would create differences. And one thing that you do not want to happen is that all of the applicants at the top of the list to be hired are all from the same board because those applicants got the lenient board. Um, you instead want the interviews to be a basis of what the applicants have to say and their skills and abilities, not as much dependent on the boards themselves.
Amy, that makes perfect sense and, and I'm going to dumb it down for myself and, uh, and some of us. So for example, if we determined that we needed to have three panels and there were nine questions that were going to be interviewed and we're going to have, uh, uh, you know, uh, each panel would have three questions of the interview they asked. So everybody, fair amount. I think that's a great idea and that's something we hadn't discussed and I understand why that is fair and important.
So it becomes the interview speed dating version?
Yeah, pretty much.
Interview at one table for one, three questions and you go to another one for three more?
Yeah, it, it is very much like that. And the reason why it's more fair that way is that all three of the panels would be essentially interviewing all of the applicants. So you wouldn't have the disparity of saying, oh, you know, this applicant went to the easy board and this applicant went to the really difficult board. Instead, all of the applicants are interviewed by everyone. And that is going to depend on how many applicants talk. But it might be best to see how many applicants you have passing the exam and that you have ready to schedule the interviews before you decide on the makeup of the boards and how many boards you're going to have and how many questions are going to be asked. I think, uh, those are decisions that you can make later. But I do think some of the decisions you need to put in your merit rules and procedures to show the fairness that is involved in the process.
I really like that, Amy. I understand it. I think you could set up three different rooms. You get these three questions in this room, these three questions in this room, and these three questions in this room. I'm, I'm just saying three because I said I'd mentioned nine earlier, but,
Sure.
I don't think that that's something that would be too complicated. Zach, would you agree with that? That, that we could evenly divide the interviews amongst however many panels we must make to get the proper amount of, um, I, I think it's fair to assume we're going to interview about a hundred people every time. If we put a limited a hundred people-
Yeah, I don't think you are. I think that's a high number. Even, I think the number of applications are down compared to previous years. Although, I have to say, unemployment, as it is skyrocketing, you may have more applicants this year. Um, it, there's a lot of unknown variables to see how that will pan out.
I, I, okay, I think that as, I think we're in a weird process as far as our transition to online, so I understand what you're saying. But I would say we'll get back to our somewhat normal numbers. I could be wrong. But as you've mentioned, if the average score is mid eighties and we're not setting our cutoff until a hundred, I think we could probably say we're still going to have around a hundred interviews. If that makes sense.
It's possible. And I think the fact that you're limiting it to no more than a hundred means that you're making it manageable and that it's not going to escalate beyond your capabilities.
Right.
Is a, uh, uh, an eighty percent a more? Uh, I don't want to think of it. Uh, do we need to not drop down to seventy to become more diverse if we're going to max out a hundred at no matter what? But we really want to be interviewing top candidates. So, I mean, is eighty low enough, Joe, do you think, for, and Brian, for, for getting this diversity, uh, that we're looking for to, to find a hundred?
Well, seventy's passing.
Right, seventy is passing, Mr. Spalding. That's right. And I think what, uh, Ms. Emerson's telling us is we're probably not going to hit seventy. Um, people are, are hanging around eighty to ninety percent.
No, I think you are, I think you are going to hit seventy. I think if you are having a hundred applicants continue on to the interview process, I think you are going to get applicants who are going to get seventy percent on the exam.
And, and I think that the spirit of what we're trying to do, that's okay. And, and I'm speaking for the union and I think I'm speaking for Chief Grant, Chief Emerson. I, I believe we all agree, if a guy gets a seventy percent on this test, we think that we can train him, or a gal, rather. Also, we can train them to be a good firefighter and we want them to have the opportunity to at least sit in front of the panel and, and plead their case and have a good interview.
Right. I, I was saying that if we're going to max out at a hundred before we ever get to eighty, did we need to lower it to seventy?
Yeah, you just don't know though.
Yeah, that's true.
Just don't know.
Okay, and so, and with the panels, we're talking about, we don't necessarily have to say five right now to get through this meeting.
Right.
To announce that we're changing and going to a panel interview process.
Right.
Correct?
I think you can just have a number of panels later on, once you do have your final count of applicants.
And I think, Ms. Emerson, to be in line with your email, as long as we specified that each panel would interview twenty or more candidates.
Right.
And the interviews could be split amongst the panels.
Right.
Then it would meet all the criteria that you guys would need to make it as fair as possible.
Right. And we can work with what, what outcome you need for the interview. So, you know, if everybody interviewing three questions and a hundred applicants, if that's going to stretch the time out too long and it does emotionally drain the interviewers, we could potentially have, for example, um, four boards total. And then you could have, um, one set of applicants to see board, boards A and B. And the second set of applicants would be seeing boards C and D. And then if we do need to compare the averages and if we do need to norm the scores, we're prepared to do that. Uh, but I, I feel like we need to take a look at scheduling and how much time would be required. Um, how many people you have available to conduct the interviews. I think as long as you leave that somewhat open to be decided, once you actually have the count, I think you'll be in better shape.
Well, I think that-
Your framework works.
Yeah, I think that's great information. So this is not something you guys are unfamiliar with at all. And you're able to adapt your scoring processes to understand that panels are different and you've got different people sitting on the, on, on each panel.
But I think it's, it's better to wait and find out how many applicants you have and what the schedule's going to look like. And then decide how you're going to divide the applicants based on your needs then. Rather than pigeonhole yourself early on in the process.
So with that, Zach, uh, and as, as our legal, um, and, and Amy, uh, it, I think it's fair to say, as long as we describe what our panels look like and put a number of people on the pan, or, uh, we specify what the panels look like and try to diversify those panels as best as possible and specify a minimum number of people that each panel will see. IPSB can work with us from that point to make sure it's fairly, uh, graded. Does that sound right? Zach, are you cool with that?
That would be, that would be perfectly fine to do that. I do want to make it clear that if you pass a rule change today, though you can leave some flexibility later on to determine how many panels you're going to have, the actual language of the rule as passed has to be very clear today. Um, because there is a specific process. Uh, so what you could do is, uh, if I'm looking at the rule as- Uh, so what you could do is, uh, if I'm looking at the rule as proposed, um, we're basically talking about the personal interview section. So you would change the first paragraph, um, to the commission with the assistance of the local union and the administration of the Jeffersonville Fire Department shall establish panels to conduct personal interviews, not five panels. Um, the interviews shall be considered as examinations of the applicant's character, personal habits and reputation, as well as mental ability and general fitness. Section A of that would remain the same because, uh, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe that we're, we're still going no higher than a hundred interviews. And the minimum score, uh, to proceed to the interviews is going to be seventy percent. Section B would change to each panel shall conduct at least twenty interviews of eligible candidates. And the panels may.
Although I don't know, I don't know if I would tie yourself to at least twenty candidates either because there have been years in the past where there have been fewer than twenty. But that being the case, it would only require one board. So.
I don't know that that really ties our hands. If there's only thirty applicants, then we just.
There's only thirty applicants, then you may only have one board. I think the point is that you wouldn't have multiple panels.
Right.
Uh, yeah, so I guess you could put panels in parentheses, the S in parentheses to make it clear that you could have one panel if there's not enough applicants.
And a quick question, do, does your agility take, or do they have to pass the CPAT in order to be eligible for the test or does that come later?
The CPAT comes later, um, actually only at the time of hiring is when we require them to have the CPAT.
Okay. So the first event of testing is the written exam?
Yes.
Okay.
Right.
Um, so each of the panel, panels shall conduct, uh, at least twenty interviews of eligible candidates. The panels may split the interviews of individual candidates between panels. I don't know exactly how you want to phrase that, but, um, and then section C, instead of saying, each panel shall consist of, you know, one member from the administration, one member from the fire merit commission and three members of the, uh, Jefferson, Jeffersonville Fire Department. I think instead of saying that, you, you might change it to.
Shall consist of members of and then listed.
Shall consist of members of those groups, but you don't want to limit yourself to who's going to be on them.
Right.
And so.
I think it is good to emphasize that diversity among the panel members is what you're aspiring toward as well.
Yes, and I would keep that final sentence that reads, in addition, each panel will strive to include at least one female, one racial minority, or however you also want to phrase that. I mean, you can just say, each panel will strive to include, to be diverse in its makeup.
When we talked about this, when, when, when we brought down Indianapolis Fire and, and we all discussed, um, the, the idea wasn't to get more union, you know, online firefighters in there to make judgment on, on our applicants. It was because we have women and we have minorities. And it gave us a big pool of people that we could diversify our panels better with. Whereas it was just one member of, of whatever entity you wanted. You're, you're quite limited as far as trying to diversify each panel. So that was the spirit behind bulking up because we had such a large pool of possible panel members in our freaking file, you know?
That makes sense.
Well, can I say something? Hello?
Yes.
Yeah. I thought the, uh, the spirit of getting more people involved was because we may have so many people to interview that the five of us on the merit board couldn't interview that many people. So basically you were getting us some help.
That's, that's actually absolutely correct, uh, Mr. Spaulding. But at the same time, whenever we check, our, our commission is quite diversified. You know, we've got, we've got all different, we've got, uh, different races and, and sexes on our commission. So if we were going to rebuild new panels for the interviews, we wanted to make sure that we were keeping with that spirit in keeping a diversified interviewing panel. So.
Right.
You're correct.
So I was saying, if we don't get a large number of applicants, then we could still interview with the five people on the merit board that we have. Is that right?
Uh, no, I don't think that would be right if we changed the rules. Um, it would still involve a merit commissioner, but I think that the diversity part of it would still be, uh, being met.
Well, I was just saying, say if we only had.
Is there any reason you have to limit that there's only one, it, you could have more than one merit commission member?
Absolutely. And we weren't against that. We were actually trying to limit, they don't get paid for these interviews. So we were just.
And it is time consuming. Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'm saying, why would it vary from the way we did it last year or two years ago? If we don't have more applicants?
If you don't have more applicants, it, it may be very similar to how you did it last time. But I think it remains to be seen until we have the applicant pool set to know how we can schedule things.
I mean, we also know that we're going to have, uh, at least what, a hundred and sixty applicants put in for this time. And I think all the rules that change would, uh, um, need to reflect something we're going to do in the future.
I hate to, uh, cut everybody off here. Uh, first I want to do, I want to clarify one thing. I think I misstated. We do not require the CPAT at the time of hiring. We require at the time of offer, uh, start through the pension process. Um, that's my mistake. Um, we do have to finish this meeting before six forty-five. Um, so I don't know if there's going to be an issue that we're going to get through today, it seems like, um.
No, I think, I think you, you in general do have your framework down. And I think everybody agrees that you want your panel members to have diversity. But you don't want to set yourself with having exactly five boards. You may end up having three boards. You may end up having six boards. I, I think that's the main thing is just not tying yourself down to exactly five boards.
Sure. I, I, I completely agree. We're on the right track. We're getting close. But I don't know that we're going to get a specific rule, uh, passed by the commission with the, the exact language that they want because we.
Making changes.
We are making changes. A very specific.
Zach, is there a way we can, uh, we can wrap up this meeting and call another special meeting? I'm sure it's going to.
I can do that immediately. So you can table, you can table this, the board could vote to table this issue as well as, uh, the next item on the agenda, which is basically just picking the dates for the, uh, testing. Um, and I can, we can call another meeting later this week.
And we've already extended the application process, right? That was voted on.
That was done at the last meeting and that was extended through May thirty-first.
So let's, uh, let's have another, but I, I understand that it's, uh, six forty-three. Thank you, Ms. Emerson, for being here very much.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming, Amy. Uh, so you would need to vote to table those things real quick before we get going.
I, I think because of the time constraints, uh, I'll go ahead and make a motion to table this for the time being to be reconvened, uh, at another special meeting on a date yet to be set.
I'll second. Uh, roll call vote? Dyson, yes.
McCormick, yes.
TA, yes.
Okay, thank you. And then, uh, on, uh, the additional, um, old business on finalizing the uh, data fabrication testing, I'd like, uh, for a motion to table that, please.
Zach?
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Well, I'll make a motion to table.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Dyson, yes.
McCormick, yes.
Smith, yes.
TA, yes.
Thank you. Um, we're running out of time, but, uh, Zach, do you have any comments or?
I have no comments other than I want to thank Amy for, um, being available for this today, as well as all the members of commission. I'm sorry that this, this, uh, timing issues come up. As well as anybody in the public who's watching or, uh, attending.
So you're going to contact us with another date?
I will, yes.
All right.
Steve?
You need a motion to adjourn? If so, I make such motion.
Second.
I'll second it.
Thank you all.
Uh.
Hi.
Thank you.
Hi.
Jimmy? You have.
Stay up here.
Thanks, Zach.
Okay. All right, thanks.
That's three, yeah.
All right.
Thank you all.
All righty.
Goodbye.